Call to order, the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Wednesday, August 27, 2025. Please rise for the pledge. Okay, I'll start with a reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire our passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. I need an approval for the revised agendas or a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the public comments on the district-wide school safety plan.
None.
None? No comment? Okay. Is there a motion for the approval of the district-wide school safety plan?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Questions or comments from interested citizens? We have none. And no follow-up either. Okay. And that will bring us to Dr. Hassler, who will do a presentation on Portrait of a Graduate.
Dr. Mouse.
I'm Dr. Mouse. I don't see any pedants, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Tonight, we're going to be providing a quick update regarding the recently approved New York State Education Department Portrait of a Graduate, as well as some of the graduation measures and the New York Inspires Initiative that the state has been advertising for the last few years.
For starters, we'll start with the Portrait of a Graduate.
So, the background is, we've kind of divided it into three bullets on the screen. It is an intentional phased-in approach from NISID, and it's, the planning year was during fall '24 through summer of '25. Phase one has an installation between fall of '25 and summer of '27. Phase two will be implementation in the fall of '27 to summer of '28. Full implementation and scaling up will be beyond fall of '28. So, you see there, it's part of New York Inspires with a plan to transform education into, in New York State. The four areas that are being, the four kind of steps to that transformation include adopting of the Portrait of a Graduate, redefining credits, sunsetting assessment requirements, and moving to one diploma. And Dr. Hassler will go into more detail about that. And New York State has provided some descriptors of what a graduate will be upon graduation in New York State. So, those descriptors are listed for you. And really, they're focusing, some of the actions that they want to see our graduates be able to do include blending academic mastery with essential life skills, show a readiness to thrive in a complex and rapidly changing world, be curious, compassionate, and capable of turning challenges into opportunities, and improving engagement and motivation by making learning more relevant and interesting, and having our students be able to see how different subjects relate to one another, see the bigger picture, and make connections between concepts.
So, as it relates back to Monroe Woodbury, last year, one of our district goals was to initiate the strategic planning process and committee across the school district. And that strategic plan committee has created a number of different task forces within the strategic plan. One of the, one of the task force is the Student Achievement Task Force. So, at the end of last year, as we were going through this process, in anticipation of the state releasing the Portrait of a Graduate, the Student Achievement Task Force developed a goal for the '25-'26 school year to basically develop a Monroe Woodbury Central School District version of a Portrait of a Graduate. We weren't able to do that work last year because we were awaiting the state releasing theirs, which was approved in July. Following that release in July, the state is going to be coming out with a number of guidance documents related to greater detail about the various elements that Dr. Morales spoke about. So, when that document is released, the Strategic, the Student Achievement Task Force will be getting together, and we're going to be creating, in alignment with the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, what we believe are the attributes of graduates within the Monroe Woodbury Central School District. And we anticipate publishing that at the end of the school year for the '26-'27 school year. So, as Dr. Morales mentioned earlier, the New York Inspires Initiative had four, has four different proposed transformations. The first transformation was to release the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, which they've done. The other three transformations are redefining credits, sunset assessment requirements, and move to one diploma. And I put a screenshot here, taken directly from the State Ed website, the frequently asked questions section, because we've received a number of questions from families regarding the Portrait of a Graduate, because they've commingled some of these other transformations with the release of the Portrait of a Graduate. And we've had to answer to parents that the release of the Portrait of a Graduate does not coincide with some of these other things that the state has proposed. Right now, on the State Ed website, it says in the fine print at the bottom, again, it's important to note that none of the proposed changes are final until they are approved by the Board of Regents. And this is some of the other things that have been in discussion, including the redefining of credits. The state has talked about including a financial literacy requirement, a career and technical education requirement, work-based learning, various other items into other requirements for students to graduate. Those requirements have not been fully approved by the Board of Regents yet, so we are still awaiting that release. Right now, we are still under the old graduation requirements. Another major discussion has been the state phasing out the role of Regents exams and having that be the sole requirement for students to demonstrate proficiency. They're looking at other pathways, other measures for kids to be able to demonstrate that proficiency to graduate. However, even though they've released this timeline, the timeline has not been fully approved yet. So, I'll give you an example. We've had a number of students who didn't pass Regents exams, who might be freshmen or sophomores in the school district, and parents have reached out saying, "My student is part of the cohort of 2024. It says that they are not going to need Regents exams. Does my child need to retake this exam?" And my response has been, yes, they need to retake that exam, because at this moment in time, those regulations have not been passed yet. Another transformation is the move to one diploma. The state is anticipating moving away from local Regents or Regents with advanced designations, those three different diplomas, and having one New York State diploma. All of the other enhancements would be considered endorsements, the Seal of Civic Readiness, the Seal of Bileiteracy, the Master of Science, the Master of Mathematics, advanced designation honors, any of those different categories will be endorsements that will be on that singular diploma. But again, while these are things that have been widely publicized from the State Education Department, we're still awaiting their final approval by the Board of Regents, and then we will go into our action planning to be able to prepare for those. So, we're raising awareness, right now, as Dr. Morales said, that they're in the raising awareness phase. We're raising awareness around this. But know that only the first transformation, the Portrait of a Graduate, is the item that has been approved at this point from the State Education Department. So, I included in there links directly to the State Education website where this information was pulled from, so that way, people, they can reference this information. I recommend going to the frequently asked questions, and you can see all of the various questions that people might have, and certainly, we're available to anyone that might, you know, have any specific questions related to their child. In terms of next steps for us, as I said, they released the Portrait of a Graduate in July. As soon as they release the guidance, which they anticipate coming out in the very, very near future, we'll be convening that Student Achievement Task Force as part of the strategic plan, and we'll be working on the Monroe Woodbury Portrait of a Graduate. And then, the last piece of that is just awaiting for additional updates from the State Education Department about the remaining three transformations regarding the graduation measures. Questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You said a few times that parents have started to reach out to you, or to the school district. Do we have any plans to send information to them?
We do. I actually have been in communication with the Guidance Department team up at the high school and the high school administration that, once the school year starts, we want to make sure that we get the word out, and including that message in open house as that comes in September. So, absolutely, yes, providing that clarity.
I mean, you said high school, but middle school, eighth graders?
Middle school as well, right. Because this, this goes back to the cohorts of '26, '27, '29, which is all the way down to the middle school. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Tracy Norman, will give us district goals for 2025, 2026.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, we're going to present round two of the draft of our goals. I have to say, I'm excited about these goals pending your approval. So, we're going to follow the same format similar to what we did last year, which means that we'll have each cabinet member present their specific goal that falls under their department. What you'll see is that the goals are intentionally written globally, but what has changed will be the actual action steps, or at least the focus area under each goal. You also note that we've added two additional goals, and as we go through each of the goal, the actual cabinet member will come forward and walk you through. Thank God. So, these are the first four goals. As I said, they are intentionally written globally, and the action steps have changed, very similar to last year, but the action steps beneath each goal will look different as we'll walk through tonight. And these are the final four of the eight, with two additional goals added. Now, I ask Dr. Hassler, Dr. Morales, to speak to our academic goal.
Thank you. So, as Dr. Norman shared, the overarching goal one remains consistent with what was started last year, to create conditions to increase students' understanding and application of academic content now for the '25-'26 school year. Also, as Dr. Norman shared, there are some action steps that are carrying over from the previous year, and there are some new action steps that we've been added. The first action step is a carryover, because this is truly a process that is an ongoing process for the school district, which is to review and monitor student attendance and student performance, and to increase student outcomes. That's inclusive of examining our student assessment, our state assessment performance, as well as our annual benchmark assessments over the course of the school year. We've taken our, both our three-through-a testing, our NISA testing, our Regents exams. We've compiled that data. We're sharing it with the staff. That is going to be something that's happening at the onset of the school year throughout the fall. And again, the benchmark assessments, we benchmark students at the beginning, at the middle, and at the end of the school year. The review of that data will be ongoing with the staff. We also started the Student Attendance Initiative last year. We've talked about chronic absenteeism. The state is moving to a tiered model in tracking student attendance this year. And as always, you know, we believe that student attendance is a critical component to students achieving well in the school district, so we continue to monitor our student attendance as well.
So, our next action step is establishing a curriculum council. Part of that council, the purpose is to facilitate a collaborative review of our curricula, identifying any areas in need of improvement, and recommending any changes to enhance student learning and academic achievement. As it's listed there, we are looking to form this committee in September and meet three times throughout the year, bringing together diverse perspectives and making informed decisions to ensure a coherent and high-quality educational experience for our students through 12th grade.
The next action step is, once again, a continuation from last year. It's to align K-12 curriculum with state and national standards. This was work that was started last year. Last year, we really focused on ELA math, science, and social studies. We're now looking to expand that into other curricular areas as well, with the goal of continuing to develop pacing guides, so that way, there's a consistent sort of tracking of how kids are progressing through the curriculum each year. That was work that was started last year, will continue into this year.
So, our next step is reviewing, revising, and finalizing our district-wide MTSS plan, our multi-tiered system of supports. So, that process is going to involve examining our current practices, analyzing data, and aligning all of our tiers of support, from universal instruction to our targeted interventions. Our primary goal and outcome of this revision is to improve our student outcomes, reduce behavioral issues, and make sure that we're providing more access to support for all learners. We really want to be able to walk away from this with basically a booklet that if you have a question about what do our services look like, what is the criteria for those services, who provides them, where are they provided, all of those answers are in one place.
And that is very similar to the final action step, which is to review, revise, and finalize and update a special education plan for the school district, similar to combine, compiling a district-wide team to examine our MTSS program and plan for the school district. We'll be developing a K-12 team that will do the same for special education, again, with an emphasis on ensuring that all students, regardless of what their disability or their programmatic recommendations are, have equitable access to services, that our special education plan and program is compliant with federal and state regulations, and it supports the overall academic behavior and social-emotional needs for all of our students with disabilities.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present goal number two, which is to develop and maintain systems that focus on recruitment and retention of effective educators and support staff. The action items that go along with goal number two first would be to develop a task force that would analyze the recruitment gaps. The purpose would be, obviously, to identify if and where we are falling short in attracting candidates, particularly in those hard-to-fill positions. This group would take a look at the data that is being presented, such as what are the applicant trends that we have in the district, the turnover data, those turnover ratios. We would review exit interview feedback, you know, analyzing how we can do a better job of recruiting and also retaining our staff. And then, of course, from there, we would look to develop targeted recruitment strategies that would address these identified gaps. From there, we would look to continue the partnerships with the local colleges, many that we have already established, but we want to continue to build those pipelines for both certified staff, the teaching candidates, and also the support staff and related service providers, et cetera. We do have great working relationships already with many local colleges, Stax, Mount St. Mary's, Oneonta, New Paltz, but we want to continue those relationships so that we can expand on our student teaching opportunities that we're providing, and internships, so that, you know, if things are going well, that would open the door for, you know, potential job offers. And the benefit of that to the district would be that we would have a steady flow of, hopefully, high-quality, pre-vetted candidates that are familiar with our district culture, and we're familiar with them through our partnership and relationships with the local colleges. The next would be to attend a job fair. It somewhat speaks for itself, but we want to increase the district's visibility in the competitive markets. We want to showcase our district's strengths to candidates out there, potential candidates, show the candidates what type of professional support that we offer, the competitive pay, the positive culture for Monroe Woodbury, and then, of course, to gather that contact information, particularly from those hard-to-fill positions and sought-out, difficult positions to fill, so that we can follow up with our recruitment strategies and campaigns. The next would be to update and implement interviewing protocols. Really, what we're looking to do is just to standardize this process, make it consistent for all buildings and departments. The goal would be to update our current hiring manual with protocols that are put in place from the start of the hiring process, which includes, you know, posting for vacancies in the district, and the steps that would follow all the way through pending board approval for, for those candidates. So, that would be a very comprehensive document that would forms and practices and protocols that would be consistent, removing bias for all buildings and departments. The next action step would be ongoing training, professional learning and development. We want to provide those continuous growth opportunities, really, to boost the retention of staff. Professional learning could include and would include instructional leadership and technical training based on, you know, our staff needs, but we want to look at the providing professional learning and opportunities of growth, not just for our teachers and certified staff, but for all support groups, you know, all of the departments that are within our district. We want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to learn and grow in their role. We also want to take a look at, with training, is to develop some ongoing training throughout the year for certain subgroups. We don't want to bring somebody onboard, hand them a folder, and then, you know, wish them well. We want to make sure that we're providing continuous feedback and training throughout the year, particularly with our substitutes, as we are hiring new substitutes throughout the year. Not everybody may have, you know, the same training that's provided at the beginning of the school year, so we want to make sure that we are developing something that's very tailored towards Monroe Woodbury and our practices in our district, and providing that ongoing training for certain, certain groups of staff throughout the school year, particularly looking at substitutes and teacher aides. We would use training, again, as a retention tool. We know that staff stay where they feel supported and that they're going to be able to grow. The next action step is mentoring. We want to continue to develop and enhance our administrator mentoring program. We started that last year. It was very successful. Administrators have already reached out, asking if that is going to continue, and that absolutely will continue. So, we're going to look to build on the success of last year with our administrators. Dr. Morales and I are going to work with the teachers' union to also take a look at the teacher-mentor program, because we want to make sure that we're providing ongoing support for teachers when needed, you know, for as long as needed. We don't want to necessarily have to cut off certain mentorship and support. We want to make sure that we are supporting our teachers for, again, as long as they need. What we don't want to happen is, obviously, and there's no evidence of this happening, but we don't want staff leaving the district because they're not feeling like they're being supported. So, that's going to be a huge area of focus that our, our staff and our teachers, that they make sure that they know that they are valued and that they're supported here in Monroe Woodbury. And the last, monitor salaries, again, just to remain competitive. This is just to regularly benchmark the salaries against neighboring districts across the state averages, looking to, of course, attract the best possible candidates and bring them in here, and then, take the steps necessary to keep them here. There are no questions?
Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Thank you so much.
Dr. VS?
Good evening, Board of Education members. So, we have, technology has two goals this year. This is the same goal as last year, building a resiliency, resilient cybersecurity framework for a safe and secure learning environment. In last about three to four years, there are enough studies that has come out, and we kind of knew this from a physical security perspective, that when a student and staff feel secure, their, their learning outcome improves. This also, the same logic applies to cybersecurity as well. If you remember last year, last year was our first year. We engaged an internal auditor, auditing firm, who has a specific expertise of reviewing the cybersecurity controls. What we are doing is, we are following the Center for Internet Security. That is an organization that has came out a de facto standard. There are 18 controls that they have put out, and these controls are followed by a variety of different industries, education, hospitals, financial institutions. What we are trying to do here is, we are trying to look at what are the current processes and procedures we have? What are the solutions we have? What are the type of the trainings we have implemented? And then, having an outside expert come in and then look for the gaps, and then finding the gaps before the bad actors find it. And our goal always is to find the gap, and how can we improvise? Last year, we did, so there are 18 CIS controls that are industry benchmark. We divided that in six controls every year. So, last year was our first year. We did the first six controls. This year, we are going to do another six controls, so controls seven to 12. So, these controls have 43 subcontrols, and then, and it varies from the cybersecurity, infrastructure management, email audit, audit log, variety of different subcontrols. So, having this outside firm come and review our current processes for this specific six control, and then provide us a comprehensive report, that is the goal as a part of this process. So, we would like to continue to conduct the comprehensive cybersecurity review, the risk assessment for controls seven to 12. Then, based on that finding, develop an implementation plan. It's only a starting point when we find something. Then, we need to make sure, we want to make sure that, that we develop a plan of either mitigating that risk or avoid that risk by putting certain specific solution in process, or increase the cyber insurance to, to avoid that risk from a financial sector perspective. Also, allocate the variety of different resources. Finding this, this, this gap, or finding this recommendation has a certainly implication on budget, technology, infrastructure, and then also, potentially, it could be a personnel. So, once we find, once we find out what are the gaps, we will work with allocating the variety of different resources that will be in the spring 20, this school year, which will coincide with our budget starting process for the following year. Implementing the variety of different safeguard that are identifying, that will be starting from next year based on the findings. The last three bullets are, are always ongoing, maintain the current disaster recovery and incident response plans. As, as the AI is forming, and now, we're talking about superintelligence, so does the cyber world is actually maturing to use a variety of different techniques as well. We are, our goal is to always look out for what are the trends happening outside, make sure that we are prepared for any possible worst-case scenario related to cybersecurity. And it's not only if, it's when. And how are we matured and be ready to come out with a minimum downtime to support our students and staff learning and teaching? Professional learning, that's always an ongoing process, allowing us to go ahead and then provide a variety of different security training. So, we provide the security training, and I'm sure, as a board member, you all receive the data privacy emails. Sometimes it can be annoying, but I think it's an important part of the process. We also work with every single staff member across the districts, whether it's the student teacher, substitute, leave replacement, board members, or administrators or teachers. And it's an important part of this process to make them aware. We also follow six times a year a phishing technique to make sure that our user behavior is not out of the line in terms of finding this and then working with the specific users to make them really aware. The process, the goal of the process is to make the user behavior, being aware about what are the norms and trends outside, and ultimately, continuous monitoring and evaluation of our security measures. That is the purpose of this goal. We will continue this process next year the same way as well. And we talk a lot about the, the power of technology in the backend. Now, the truth, technology is important to, to put this in hands of our students and staff. As a part of the New York State requirements, every three years, we're required to develop a new comprehensive instructional technology plan. Our goal this year to work with the, our internal, internal technology committee, we have a really robust internal technology committee that are a variety of different stakeholders, support members, student support, student members, guidance counselors, union representation, administrators, teachers, support staff, technology team members. It's a cross-section of a variety of different stakeholders. We would bring, and if you remember, last year, we engaged them to provide, to work with supporting the AI guidelines, and they have done a really, really amazing job last year to provide the guidelines for staff and student use. This year, the goal of the Instructional Technology Committee is to, to work with the assistant, both Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction along the side way, and then understand and review what we have, develop a shared vision of and review what we have, develop a shared vision of technology integration that is aligning with the district goals along with the strategic plan goals. Technology is only good when it's used appropriately and it empowers our students and staff. We would, we will also going to audit our existing infrastructure, variety of different devices and digital resources to make sure that they're all equitable, spread out across the board, and then design an ongoing professional learning for educators educators and support staff for that reason on effective technology integration. You have heard that AI is becoming a big, big industry now. We want to make sure our our support staff as well, our teachers are ready with that. Last year, working with with my colleagues and Dr. Norman, we had started the process of of educating and providing the professional learning opportunities for our support staff and instructional staff. We will continue to do that part this year as well. And ultimately, to publish the instructional technology plan, the process for this is once we finalize the plan, working with my colleagues and Dr. Norman, ultimately it will go through our local offices and regional information centers. Once they approve it, they will push it to the state and then state will approve that plan. The goal is to have our plan approved in the next summer before the beginning of the school year.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Vias. So I'll speak to this goal. Last year, we did an amazing job in terms of forming a strategic plan. So this year is just basically a continuation of last year. Last year, we had to assemble a team, we had to really just review data, that that included our vision, mission statement, focus areas. And now we're entering the phase where we want to have feedback from the community. And we've partnered with a consultant group, Generation Ready, to allow us and help us to collect data. And as you see on the screen, we're going to use multiple forums to collect that data through surveys, small group forums, town halls, et cetera. Once we collect this data, and we're going to take our time and make sure we reach everyone, then we have to make meaning of this data. In other words, what is the community telling us? What are our stakeholders telling us? And those stakeholders, by the way, will be teachers, administrators, parents, students, business partners. Once we make meaning of what that data is telling us, then we're going to refine our goals. And we're not at a point yet where where those goals will be three years or five years. Depending on what the data tells us, we'll establish timelines, but we'll pursue those goals the following year. But the intent, if you see the final bullet, is to pull all this information together and publish our strategic plan by spring 2026.
Mr. Cahill?
Good evening, everyone. So there are three goals under the domain of Business Management Services. The first goal deals with management coordination, planning of our existing multi-year capital program project. So specifically, the action steps involved deal with submission of compliance reporting requirements with the New York State Education Department for primarily Phase One, which was Phase One of construction. And I've mentioned this in the past, there are actually multiple concurrent actions occurring. So we went through Phase One of the construction part of the project this summer. We're wrapping things up. And once construction is complete, as there is in the beginning, there's design specifications and plans and specs that have to be developed with the engineers, the architects, and then submitted and reviewed to New York State Ed Department. At the end of the construction phase, there is also materials and reports that have to be submitted to SCD. The most important is likely the final cost report, which actually drives state aid, and I've talked a little bit about that. So that's one of the action steps. We want to continue to develop and push out our public relations campaign. I think we did a really good job pre-referendum, you know, in the public relations area, and I think we really sort of need to re-energize the communication plans. We'd like to do that in the winter and spring and sort of an ongoing thing thereafter. We want to monitor and support the, I say 2023 and 2025 capital program. And I say it like that because in December of 2023, that's when we had the initial proposition approval by the community and authorization and a subsequent authorization and proposition in May of 2025. So it's sort of the two pieces are a capital program. The initial piece was 98 million and the subsequent piece was 16.6 million. So we want to continue the the rollout of Phase Two for design and construction work. And we said all along that this is like a five-year program, and the program includes multiple dozens of individual projects, and those projects each have to be reviewed, approved, and submitted to the New York State Education Department. Finalize the capital project financing and debt issuance plan. So we're in a good position in that we've set aside money in our capital reserve so we can use those savings for a lot of this initial phases of work, the the construction phase for Phase One, you incur expenses associated with design work with your architects. So what we need to do now, as we roll into Phase Two of construction, is really map out when we want to borrow. Are we going to borrow with bond anticipation notes, which is likely, do you want to issue serial bonds like immediately? You, we work with the fiscal advisor on that to make some decisions, how do interest rates look, that sort of thing. So we want to do that fall, winter of of this year. Coordinate and execute the renovation of the education center. So we are currently, have moved out of the education center, obviously, we all know that, to the Herrmann Center. And we're doing well at the education center. We're replacing the roof, repointing the building. We're going to be replacing all the windows who are essentially making the building weatherproof and, you know, fixing the envelope of the building. So moving back, you know, we're coordinating, executing that, we anticipate will be winter on or about January 1st. So that's one of our goals for this year as well. District-wide installation of classroom window air conditioners. So that is something that we have essentially accomplished already in the the first two months of the fiscal year. We went out, we procured approximately 167 window air conditioning units. We did a bid for that. We installed those units where there was electrical work that needed to be done in many of the classrooms because there were no, there weren't inappropriate outlets near the window, et cetera. And then our buildings and grounds team had to go out and install all those air conditioning units. So we've done that. We feel, we've tested the units this summer on hot days, so we feel like we're in a good place to be compliant with the heat index law, which is one of the drivers of that initiative. And final bullet, develop final feasibility study and plan for the zero emission bus initiative and mandate through New York State. So we anticipate that is in process. We'll have that complete by the spring of 2026. And as you recall, that is the law in New York State where by 2027, all new buses must be zero emission. And for all intensive purposes right now, zero emission means electric. And by 2035, the entire fleet needs to be switched over to zero emission. So it sounds straightforward, but it's actually a massive undertaking that involves utility companies, utility infrastructure, bringing the power to our bus garage. It involves a capital project reconstruction of the yard where we need chargers, we need electrical supply, we, there's all kinds of things that we need frankly for for this initiative, let alone buying new buses and replacing the existing buses. So first step is the feasibility study, and hopefully that will provide a roadmap forward. And and a part of that is the financing because as you probably have heard, a zero emission bus is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 450,000, whereas a conventional bus is more like 150,000. So there is this huge financial burden that we're managing. You can manage that through grants and federal monies, but but again, there's little uncertainty with that as well going into the future. So goal number seven, second goal for us in Business Management Services, deals with essentially the fiscal management stewardship of the district, managing resources that are consistent with board policies and guidance. And the the first bullet has to do with increasing the number of internal audit focus areas from what we've been doing, which is one annually to somewhere between two to four annually. And in New York State, just to back up for a moment, school districts go through an external audit process in the summer. We're about to do that. We also go through an internal audit process, typically with a different auditor. And the internal audit process has to do with a risk assessment process where we go through and look at the internal controls and the processes of the processes of the district and then typically pick a focus area. So it's an area to look at more deeply and closely. So that's what I'm talking about when I say the annual focus area is going from one annual focus area to somewhere between two to four. So we're we're working with the audit committee on that. So not only do you engage the auditor to go through the focus area, but you come up with a corrective action plan, and then you actually have to implement that with new procedures or internal controls to mitigate risk, that sort of thing. So that's a big part of the work, too. Next bullet or action item is essentially coming up with a fiscally responsible budget that meets the needs of students, staff, families, while being respectful and cognizant of the community's needs and ability to pay. You know, so that's something we try to do every year. We try to be smart about it. We try to maximize our return on investment, and that's a term that is, you know, sometimes not used in education. I like to use it, but it really just means we want to make our expenditures and our resources maximally effective, like whatever it is, whatever we do. And that's what that bullet has to do with. In the final goal, goal number eight, has to do with safety. It's a safety goal. So we want to institute mandates and best practices in the school, the field of schools, ensuring safety and well-being of students and staff. So this, in in the global sense, is sort of an ongoing thing that we do, and we've done a lot of work, I would say, in the last five years in this area. But specifically this year, we we are going to roll out a new remote panic alarm system. And so remote, by remote, I mean everyone, staff will be issued a card with a button. And every time I I say to myself, I want to bring the card, and I forget to bring the card so I could show everybody. But it's essentially a card that could fit in inside this. And what it what enables folks to do is actually hit the button a certain number of times and call for help. And there's like a GPS associated with it. So an administrator, if Dr. Hassler, for instance, you know, pushed the button three times, needs help, I could literally see where he is and and go. So that's great for staff. And then it also enables staff in a a true emergency, a life-threatening emergency, to initiate a lockdown, school-wide lockdown. So it's something rolling out this year. It's it's a fairly big undertaking because it literally involves facilities, infrastructure changes, there's there's devices which almost broadcast a signal that has to be installed around the district, district-wide and every building and even on the site. We need to do a lot of network and software configurations and setup. We need to test this system. We need to roll it out for the public and the staff, distribute the badges, and finally go through a a training process. So it's a pretty big undertaking, something we've been looking at for a couple of years, but we're going to going to roll it out. I say fall, winter, we have our kickoff meeting next month. Continuation of the safety protocol development, so this is something we were doing last year. We're going to continue to do that, I think with an emphasis this year on rolling out information to district staff. And we want to initiate a pilot program to procure go bags. So you've probably heard about this. Go bags are, it's like a recommendation that each classroom have some supplies, and they call it a go bag in case you need to evacuate and and leave quickly and you're going to need certain items like food or, you know, some sort of blanket or something along those lines, a pair of scissors, there's a reason for scissors now with the yonder pouches. But we want to pilot that program in the high school, at all the high school classrooms. So so those are the action steps associated with goal number.
Just a question. The action step regarding the remote panic alarm system, is that a collaboration with Dr. Vias as well regarding the technology piece of it?
It is. It definitely is. So it's, I would, I would say it's a collaboration with the technology department, the safety department, and...
Well, I just mean you oversee safety.
Business Management Services, yes. So so at the kickoff meeting, which we we've scheduled, Joseph Tripoto would be there, Bargav is there, I will be on the call, we'll have a few other folks from the business office as well as some MCC folks. So it is, it's sort of a joint, you know, cross-functional initiative. I think we like to say who owns things, which I think is really important for for teams and to be effective. It it's really going to be owned by the safety, Department of Safety and Security.
Okay.
Any questions?
Sorry. The alarm systems, are they also going to law enforcement? Or is that just local?
Well, I think, is that the case, Barbara?
Yes. So rapid, it's, it will connect it to what the term that industries use it, rapid connection system. So that will be eventually connected to the law enforcement. But as Mr. Cahill mentioned, the testing is a key. This is, this is something new to us. The industry is now moving to the variables, like we all have variable devices. So this is a next layer of, instead of having a push button fixed on a wall where maybe the students or 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 teachers might be hiding somewhere, this variable technology allows the the immediate response from the appropriate stakeholders.
So it's just for staff at the moment?
Just for staff at the moment, yeah. Any other questions?
Has this system, sorry, been used in other school districts?
Pardon?
Has this system been used in other school districts?
It has. Not that many districts in the area, but there are districts in the Georgia area, Florida, that have used this. So are there, I can't recall, does anybody?
There are, there are, this is, one of the company has a very high success ratio of of recent mass shooting. They they have, looks like they have a proven solution. And talking to the couple of references that they gave, the the folks were very happy. But anything new, it takes a time, it's a change in the shift in the culture, but it seems like it's going to be really, really good to 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 go into the right step in terms of safety and security for our students and staff.
And our our Director of Safety, Joe Tripoto, I think he did a lot of homework on this leading up the last couple of years, leading up to this. So he he looked into it closely, and this was the best solution, I think, in this.
And you said it's a little button that's on the, like, it's accessible through the plastic that's usually over the ID cards?
Yeah, I believe so, yep. But if it wasn't, we would adapt. But we've, you know, we've been assured that the the system they're proposing works, is used elsewhere and is effective.
So do you mean that different people will be responsive to different badges? Like you said, that if Eric's goes off, for example, you would get it. So there's people set up in each location that receive that signal?
My understanding, John, is it actually has to do with the the number of times you press the badge determines the kind of signal. So in other words, if there's some minor problem and I'm calling for an administrator to help, that that's not going to obviously go to the police. But it has to do with the the configuration of the badge and how you use the badge and the the button, the the button on the badge.
It is connect, it will be connected to the geolocation. So if the high school is, somebody from the high school is is pressing that, that will go to appropriate channel for the high school and so forth for the different buildings. So the way the technology is, they will blanket the area, the of our schools, and then make sure that we do the testing. And they emphasize, and we learned that too, that testing is going to be very critical for this before we start rolling it out to the to the bigger masses.
Yeah, but we would dictate the tree, the routing.
Absolutely. Yes, yes, yes. Good point.
Yeah, we're not going to, if someone in the high school needs help, it's not going to go to, it's going to go to the high school administration, not somebody else.
Is it like only active during the school day or outside the school hours?
So so this is very preliminary, but it will be during the school day for the safety. But again, I think, once we start getting the our initial call, these are all the things that we have on our docket to ask and then also bring it feedback to Cabinet and Dr. Norman, and then the appropriate team members to make sure that we are moving in the right direction.
Yeah, in other words, we we would have the capabilities to do that, similar to how our systems are now.
So you can customize it?
Yes.
Right.
And on the backend of that, so you can see the location of every person that's wearing an ID badge?
Not necessarily us. I think they have a proprietary technology to track that.
I mean, what may be interesting is our kickoff meeting is October 15th, and perhaps as we're a little deeper into it, we could even do a presentation about it, how it's worked, you know, how it works. Maybe we could have somebody from the company here.
Sounds like a good idea.
Who would really understand and be able to address all these questions.
Great. Okay. Any other questions?
So in closing, I just would like the board, you and the public, to know that I emphasized that these goals are written globally intentionally. So the next step obviously would would be for each cabinet member to take these globally written goals and form their own goals. And it would be a little bit more technical, and they would add more items. And those goals would be formatted, and we already have a matrix that spells out who's responsible.
responsible, when, where, and why. And from the cabinet goals, our principals and directors would then write, you know, their goals. And so everything would be nested in these district goals to help us accomplish what we're trying to do for the following year. So pending your questions, that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Next is the approval of the board goals. But before we ask for approval, I'd like to read them a little bit and summarize. The Monroe Woodbury Board of Education is committed to advancing the district's mission by fostering strong communication and partnerships, ensuring policies remain current and aligned with best practices, and supporting effective district leadership through the superintendent evaluation process. These goals and action steps provide a framework for accountability, continuous improvement, and collaboration with all stakeholders to enhance student learning and community engagement. Our first goal of communication, the Board of Education will create and sustain collaborative partnerships that foster academic excellence, expand learning opportunities for all students, and promote a positive culture in our schools and community. Our second goal is policy review. The Board of Education will continue our policy review to ensure alignment of district policies with practice, as well as applicable state and federal laws. And our third goal is superintendent evaluation. The Board of Education will continue our annual superintendent evaluation process to promote effective leadership and accountability within the district. The Board recognizes that student achievement, district progress, and community satisfaction are closely connected to the superintendent's performance, and that meaningful feedback is essential to success. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the board goals?
Sorry, Dawn, we skipped 8.1, I believe.
Yeah. Oh. Is there approval of the minutes from August 20th, August 13, 2025?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the approval of the district goals as well? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And approval of the Board of Education goals. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next, for personnel, Mr. Berger.
Good evening, again. I respectfully am requesting board approval for the personnel items listed under 10.1 through 10.17.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And next, we have Mr. Cahill for Business and Financial.
Thank you. I also respectfully request approval of Business and Financial items 11.1 through 11.6.
Any questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of recommendations of the Committee on Special Education?
Motion.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And reports by Board and Central Office. Dr. Hassler.
So congratulations to everybody who was appointed tonight. Welcome to Diane Gentile to the table. Good to see. Just a big shout out to the summer school team and the high school team. We had summer school graduation. It was great to congratulate our summer graduates and, you know, wish them well in their pursuits moving forward. It was a beautiful day. I think we're two-for-two with graduations this year, which is fantastic. It's awesome, if you've driven by the campus, the main campus, over the last few days, you've seen our student athletes who are out and the buildings are in full swing. So we're slowly getting, prepare for the start of the school year. The buildings look great. Thank you to Buildings and Grounds. Thanks to the middle school team. They had their sixth grade orientation and new student orientation last week. It was great to see all the students back. High School is welcoming their new students, as well as the ninth graders. I think tomorrow is the ninth grade and new student orientation. So we're looking forward to having everybody back next week. Enjoy your Labor Day weekend. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Morales.
It's going to be difficult sitting after Dr. Hassler because he takes most of what we were going to talk about. But again, you know, thank you to Mr. Conway and his staff for the summer school graduation ceremony. Great to see some of our students graduating. Thank you to our administrators and our teachers who are in and have been relentless in making sure the buildings are ready to welcome our students. And have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Cerial.
I want to, you know, by the time we're here again, the school will be in full swing next week. I want to thank everyone tonight for all their presentations and the goals. It was very well done, concise and to the point, which we love. I just want to say, may God bless all the students coming back to school and all the students who left for college or trades.
Okay. Dr. Santico?
This was my first working meeting, and it was very exciting. So I look forward to working with the various committees and the work that comes with it moving forward, and I look forward to a successful academic year.
And welcome to the begin, to the dais, our new district clerk. Okay. Mr. Berger.
Good evening. I, too, wanted to congratulate our summer school graduates, and we wish them certainly the best in their, their future and, you know, their pursuits. I want to welcome all of our new hires. The HR office has been buzzing, to say the least, you know, these past few weeks and end month, getting ready for the new school year. But again, I mentioned last board meeting that the administrators and our directors, they've done an exceptional job recommending great candidates, and it's given me a lot of joy meeting with the candidates and seeing how excited they are to start the year and how eager they are to be part of Monroe Woodbury. So we're doing a fantastic job, and I'm looking forward to the start of the school year. I, too, was going to mention the same thing as Dr. Hassler, that it's great driving down 32 and seeing all the student athletes out there, because you know that means that school is right around the corner. So we're looking forward to welcoming back our students and staff next week for another great school year.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. Since we mentioned electric buses, I'll keep on what I always say, electric buses. We have a real plan because the permanent plan will not work. So I look forward to seeing that report on how it plays out. They tell us that the electric companies can't support, and the buses are not available to buy, and all of those kinds of things. So I can never let that go, so I apologize in advance. But have a great night and safe summer. Look forward to the first day of school.
Dr. Vias.
So big shout out to our summer school admin team, and congratulations to our summer school graduates. And technology, we're getting ready, just a few last-minute things, wrapping it up. We have done some major projects, upgrading the wireless access points in our middle school and high school, improvised connectivity, work on increasing the smart panels and updating them, as well as rolling out the new IMAX as a part of our equipment replacement plan. So we are ready to welcome our students and staff next week.
Thank you. Mr. Cahill.
Thank you. So I just want to make one comment about the district-wide safety plan. So there was a, I'd say, a last-minute change to the regulations, it was like mid-August, which require us to include procedures related to AEDs in the emergency response plans, which are the building plans and our district-wide plan. So although we went through the process, which is to present the district-wide plan, public document, I think we did that on July 23, and then have a 30-day comment period. We post that to the website, and then you adopt. We're going to have to go through the process again because of this last-minute regulatory change. We'll have to do that by January 1. So if in the next few months we go through this process again, that's why. We're required to have a district-wide plan in place by September 1. So we just decided to adopt what we had, you know, on or about July 23. And, you know, we'll make the adjustment in the near future. So I also like to thank our custodians. I echo what others have said, our custodians and Buildings and Grounds staff, for the work they did over the summer. We got a lot accomplished, and I think we're ready to go, and things look good. So that's good news. Thank you to them. And I'd just like to generally wish our students and staff and families and parents, you know, all the best in the new school year. And with that, I hope everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you to all the presenters tonight and have a good evening.
Dr. Murray.
So I echo all the sentiments that have been expressed already. As we wrap up the final days of summer, I, too, want to take a moment to share a few updates and extend my gratitude to everyone that's been working so hard behind the scenes, and for those of you that came out tonight. Thank you. On Monday, August 25, we have the Distraction-Free Learning Virtual Crusader Chat, where we had about 20 parents join district and building leaders for a conversation about the new law. We provided an overview and responded to questions from the community. For those who couldn't attend, our website has been updated with a detailed question-and-answer organized by topic. Over the summer, our teams have been hard at work preparing our Buildings and Grounds. From the construction of new vestibules to repaved and freshly lined parking lots, our schools are ready to receive students. Hallways shine, classrooms are refreshed, and all that's missing is the vibrant energy of our students. I'm also looking forward to our annual opening day. The one day each year when all district employees gather in one space is a very powerful reminder of the passion and dedication that drives everything we do for our students. Wishing you and your families a relaxing, joyful Labor Day weekend. Take time to rest and recharge. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. I just want to comment on the, I think, Patrick, you said 176 air conditioning units were installed? That's a lofty number. So thank you to our staff that did all that work. I'm also, this is a very exciting time of year that I look forward to each summer, especially the heat index law that will now provide, you know, the comfort for our staff and our students to learn in a better environment, and for the distraction-free learning initiative that's law that's going to be happening soon. And I'm excited to work with our new district clerk and our new student board representative, Zoe, who will be joining us next meeting. And just a quick note that, you know, some of our board members are unable to be here tonight due to, you know, some schedule conflicts. But we are excited to see you again in a few weeks and on opening day, Tuesday. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.